...order and I am sure that Mr. Mahoney will be here shortly while we'll get going. And have you all, please tell me you've read the minutes of last week's. I'm not asking.
I just, I didn't know it was so busy when I got here.
I'm not asking for a motion, I'm just begging you to all say you've read them.
I'm lying, I read. Tom's not coming tonight?
No, Tom is down one car.
Oh, goodness.
An exception to approve your minutes is written?
Yes.
All in favor? And the minutes are approved as is. We, as we stand now, Donovan, you'll be voting tonight?
What?
Okay. All business. There's nothing written here, but I would like to say, I think all of you have a copy of the report that was given to the selectmen a week ago, a week Tuesday back at their meeting, telling them, you know, we had talked about what we were going to write, what we were going to say. It was very well, very well received. They were, haven't, according to the chairman, you know, they haven't had anybody give a report like that for a very long time, and we will be doing it again in the summer, probably before the fiscal year ends or the new year begins. So, they all know. And Brenda has posted that on the planning board website, so, thank you for doing that, Brenda.
Okay.
That was actually under, there. So, we have new business. Ashley, Jerry, and Tim Dumont, yes?
Well.
Hi, would you like to come up here?
This is a simple relocation. Some photos of it for that side.
Those photos are on there too.
Site's laying on that side. It's being relocated 50 feet off to the street, back as far as it can. You can get a couple chairs.
Just pull the chair over.
Yeah, just pull the chair over.
Don't want to be in the camera.
Oh, don't worry. Remember if you guys want to share down there?
Yeah, it does. You don't want to share the street.
I share pretty well too.
So, it's a small cabin now. It's approximately 13 feet 2 inches or 2 tenths from the lake. The new one's being pushed back 50 feet from the center line of the road, and that number will be 54 feet 3 inches from the lake. So, we're turning 13-2 into 54-3.
What's in the, between, yeah, between the proposed site and the existing site? We've got a lot of concrete blocks and...
Yeah, that's the granite shoreline there, so that's the water's edge there. This is the camp there that's now. It's not very large.
Right.
That's why the proposed one's only 20 by 20, 400 square foot cabin.
This is a cabin, not year-round?
It'll be year-round, but the current one is...
Semi-year-round?
I could live there.
As some of the old cabins were.
Someone very simplistic lived there.
Yeah, nice old country cabin.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, maybe him, but not you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is there a little walkway there that goes down to the...
Yeah, the path with the...
There's one on the other side, too.
We did this relocation probably 18 years ago and it was never built on. And I think basically we're doing it in the same spot, 50 feet from the center of the road.
Right. Using the existing driveway?
The plan would be to, to expand it just a little bit so we can, A, get two cars side by side in the new driveway, but also extend it into a lot, a little bit, just to be able to get the cars off the street. Currently, you park and even the back end of my truck is almost at the street itself.
Awfully nice to get it off the road.
It would be, yeah. So, plan would be just to extend it a little bit further than what it apparently is.
And also removing, is this an outhouse?
Yes.
The building that's there?
Yeah.
Removing the outhouse and relocating that into the new home as well, too. So, eliminating the waterfront structure and this thing that's right on top of the road.
And then just getting rid of another old outhouse. It's been a long time since anyone...
There's a couple toilets in there.
Well, maybe you ought to talk to the historical society.
If there's anybody that would like it, they're welcome to have it.
And the tarp is on there.
Oh, the tarp, huh? So, there are no trees coming down, I see.
Then more than likely, there will be some, especially into the septic and things like that. I haven't removed the tree removal application yet. And then there'll be a revegetation plan for the existing structure and the removal of the trees.
Right.
And the retaining wall will stay?
The one on the water?
Yeah.
As bad as it may look, it's really, it's all granite, it's solid, and I don't think you guys have any anticipations of dealing with that.
We didn't any at this point?
Yeah, as long as it meets like standards or whatever.
No.
It's, it's safe and solid?
Yeah, it's granite, it's late granite, so it's not going to erode, it's not really into the water, the water sets back.
It's all change.
Yeah.
You do more...
More damage?
More problems removing it than what legal.
Yeah.
I'm sure the water may come up to that during high tide, but not very often.
Didn't realize they had high tide on them.
Yeah, we're in low tide right now.
Uh-huh.
It runs in four-month cycles.
Is that what it is?
It all depends on that B V D completely, let's go one more.
That's true, yeah, that's very true.
And the septic back there, and then the well?
Actually, I'm sorry, the well didn't make it on here, but it would be towards the front left corner of the site.
Okay, on the, what you, on the plane you're looking at, front left corner?
Oh, um... The, towards Loon Pond on the left front left corner.
Right, but, but towards...
Towards that retaining wall.
The retaining wall?
Yes, correct, towards Richard and Robert Johnston.
Okay, that area?
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
I don't see anything, it seems pretty straightforward.
Yeah, I mean, it's pushed back all the way against the road and...
Yeah.
Centered on the property?
Quick little update for you Gavin. Best practical location, they're taking down the small camp in the front, we're gaining from, which is 13 point something to the water, we're going back, gaining to 53 feet, be a little change to the driveway, but nothing much, and that outhouse will be taken down.
I'm afraid they might have Ken's little highlights.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Right? Sure?
It looks pretty straightforward to us.
Yeah.
New septic.
New septic?
Yes.
A lot of it on the hill.
Yeah, well, and new vegetation plant for where the house was and where a few trees might come down. Particularly in that area of the septic.
Yeah. Steep area.
Yeah, without stormwater coming down those paths?
Well, we'll have a, they'll be working with either York County Water or another nursery or somebody like that to design a stormwater mitigation plan and the revegetation plan. At a minimum, where the camp now will be revegetated, I don't know if you guys are going to do grass down there or something that's maintenance-free, but, so we'll just have to revegetate that area.
There's not a whole lot growing there now.
Yeah.
We'd be happy to put grass in or whatever you recommend.
We had to grow too much under pine trees.
Under pine trees.
Blueberry bushes.
The land is very saturated with pine needles.
Yeah, so you've probably worked with a nursery or somebody like that to be able to work with your design and come up with something there. Grass used to be the go-to for everybody, but now we feel, a lot of people feel it's harmful to the lake and we have to mow it. So, between the two factors, we don't see the grass that we used to. Okay.
We put a wall in the pollution control mark mulch down in our yard rather than grass.
Yeah, and just vegetation, different shrubs and bushes and things like that.
If you can get a couple of nice blueberry bushes growing, that's always, and that's neat to add.
Okay, yeah, I would, yeah, that'd be, that'd be great.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But anything that's going to stop the water running down, it's always great. So, I think it's all pretty straightforward.
I made a motion to accept the relocation as designed on plan?
Yes.
Discussion? So, any discussion on this side?
Straightforward to me. No closer than 54 feet.
Feet, right.
And also eliminating the outhouse into the new structure. The outhouse actually, in the right of the street.
But it's going to be gone.
It's going to be gone?
It's going to be gone.
There's a reason for that.
Yeah.
Because use the old, you know, common state to the camps, it's a long ride. There's some terrible reason about, that's why they need the outhouse.
20 by 20.
I don't know how someone did themselves out on, like, there's a power line that hangs loads, the camp goes into the outhouse and like that, is just asking for...
Could reach up and touch it.
So, we have a motion on the floor, all in favor? Any opposed, any objections? Motion passes? Best practical location application to demo?
Do we want to write any, any conditions at all or none? We'll put the standard ones on the building permit, nothing different on this one.
Yeah, there's nothing...
The 54, the removal, 54 feet removal of the...
Yeah, removal of the...
Bathroom, bathrooms, whatever you call it.
The, the, the outbuilding.
Outbuilding, that's a good one.
Yeah, removal of the outbuilding.
And stormwater mitigation.
Stormwater mitigations, you know, which is part of the revegetation. And, you know, you're moving it back, I mean, gaining a whole lot, that's really great, that's really great. So, I think, and you'll find on the permit, those will be listed, and anything after that, I'll just call Ken or Brenda.
Okay, great.
You're all set?
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Good luck, enjoy.
Thanks again.
You're very welcome.
Easy one. Sorry, it was a easy one. We're grateful, thank you.
You can, you can put your both push, your rights down there. You can close your well.
Okay. We, next we have to discuss the timeline, Board of Selectmen, budget timeline. Now, Brenda?
Yeah.
I'm going to throw this at you again.
Right.
Because as far as budget goes, the only thing I can think of is we've talked about having classes here with Southern Maine Planning Board Commission, and...
Sure.
Is that going to cost any money? Do we need to look for money?
I, I think Ken has a training line in his that generally we can deal with.
Okay.
I think what the Board of Selectmen is looking for on this is that they want any ordinance changes.
Well, that was, that was the next thing.
Right. I think you, but, they will, they always had their own line up until last year, and last year they rolled it into ours and then deducted it.
When Ken became the Director of Planning, they rolled it into his. That's his official name.
So, I think this year you're going to see that he's going to have to ask for a little more.
You said they rolled it into his and then they deducted that amount from his?
Pretty much.
I mean, here's my, who pays for this?
We, we don't really, we don't really account for things like that, but I think, I thought I had just run it out of my head.
I mean, why wouldn't we account for something like this? It takes personnel, time and materials.
There was a time that the Board of Selectmen really wanted to, to break away like my time, how much time?
Right.
It was really difficult because I might start on your minutes and be going really good, and then somebody comes in with an application for trees, and then somebody else calls for a septic inspection. So, I, I don't have chunks of time, dedicated chunks of time. Now, if, if they would say that, okay, every Wednesday you're just doing planning work and stuff, you know, that would be one way to do it, but it's pretty much...
Your time.
It, it really is. I think that some of the publications, like those books that the forestry department had out that, normally...
Right.
$15 each, and if you wanted, seven of them. And then there was another publication I saw that, what was that? That you really liked and we only had like two.
What was that?
Oh, it was the new, that Southern Maine puts out.
Southern Maine, yeah.
Right. And those I think are $15 or $20 each. So, I, I think Ken said that he would like this year to, you know, increase at least the training.
Yeah.
And probably things like the publications, things like that, even consultants. I, I mean, I think the reason they, they may have rolled that in is because the planning board, there was always a chunk that was set aside for legal fees.
Right.
You never know. And you didn't use it year after year after year, so they thought, why not just consolidate it? But you, you don't know what you're going to use for legal fees. You could be hit anytime. We've been hit two years in a row really hard.
Yeah.
You can't anticipate that, no.
I guess this really isn't a planning board thing, but I'm a little wrong, I warrant finance committee that. The way, by lumping everything together, basically, what that creates is less transparency to the people that are paying the bills. And there's a time, we've gotten into that problem of things being lumped together and nobody can say where anything's being spent. And the selectmen say this isn't doing what they want to do, but I honestly believe myself that, I mean, you, you, you have to have some kind of an average of what it costs for the planning board to operate. I'm not talking about your time, Brenda, but I'm just talking about legal fees, what it costs to print this stuff off and all that stuff. And I really don't understand why it's not separated out. Because what it does, the two things it does, it tells the people, say, say if it was $5,000 for, for the planning board, and you throw that on top of the code enforcement budget, okay? People don't see that this is the planning board, it's $5,000, code enforcement is making another $5,000 now. So, to me, it's very poor P R for one thing. And the more transparency there is, the happier people are going to be, and the less high time the town officials are going to be getting from people because...
And it, and it's also going to help on code enforcement because, well, you know, they've got X times X budget, and what do they do for that? Well, wait a minute, let's, you know, that's got to be broken apart, it's not all theirs.
And, and I realize that you're under the auspices of the selectmen on how you do it, but I don't believe in doing it that way.
Maybe something needs to be discussed.
It will be discussed.
Yeah.
Better well.
I'm just giving a copy of the budget and then we'll get that in depth, but Dennis likes it.
Well, I agree with Dennis, I think, I think we should be as transparent as possible throughout the budget of the whole town, not just code enforcement and planning board, but everything at which I have found isn't the case. And if you do call in a consultant, you had mentioned in your bylaws that, you know, you can call in consultants when you need to, as it is right now, you don't really have a budget.
No, it seemed to, when they got merged together, I thought we lost a couple of thousand under planning board or legal expense or something like that.
That's what our budget typically was, it was like 2,000, right?
Yeah.
What do we typically spend in a year?
Not much. Most of it's notifications, certified mails, things like that. Do you remember how many, well, the campground wasn't that many, was it? For publications?
Um...
For the campground, certified mail?
Those are, those are fees, we charge them off, we charge...
Right, but that comes in next year into the general fund or that goes into that.
Oh, I see, right. It does, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Right. And I, see, I don't know if they cold that against, like, when, when we put an ad in the smudge offer...
Yeah.
And the bill comes in, they do send it down to us to cold.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's all coming out of this.
Yeah.
The other tough thing is we've asked for a budget for zoning board for several years and they're like, oh, they never meet, why don't we not give you money? But all of a sudden, you have a meeting and you have to do notifications.
Right.
They usually come up with it somewheres, but...
There needs, there needs to be a contingency fund.
Exactly, at least put it here and if we don't use it, we don't use it.
Exactly, exactly. You know, it, it can go in and it can come out every year if it has to.
Yeah, yeah, if you don't spend it, you don't spend it.
It goes into general funds and when you do your budget again, you put it in.
You don't want to raise inappropriate money for no reason because even though it comes back next year, somebody still has to pay the taxes to generate it.
Somebody has to pay the taxes, that's right.
But I appreciate that, but this office generates a certain amount of money for an average of a year.
Yeah.
Whether it's $10,000 or 100, $10,000 or whatever.
Well, if you read the report we gave to the Board of Selectmen, we raised, not all collected, but altogether $54,000. That's a lot of money, it's not chicken feed.
So, I guess what my point is, between the code enforcement and the planning board, the amount of work that comes out of this place, it isn't costing the taxpayers a half dollar money.
Exactly.
No, and we usually look at that as, if we generated 100% of our revenue, then the person paying for a permit to build a house is paying me to chase chickens, goats, junkyards, they're paying for that, which really isn't fair for the person building the house. So, I've always looked at it as, we should be 20% below our income just to enforce zoning. And it shouldn't be a revenue department, it's just a user fee, whoever's using the services. So, we, we monitored it for several years and wherever we see a hole that's taken a lot of our time, we usually generate a fee for that service, 30%, best practical location. So, the best practical location for these people was $300 tonight, they had a 200 and a 100. That was me, I called them earlier because I knew we didn't... You've got to answer your phone on speakerphone. Answer it, Joe. It's Nancy. It was the notification from the President. It's just a couple of weeks later, he's getting it.
I mean, I realize that it costs us more money than what we bring in, but it's offset.
So, we were looking at it more as, what are we doing out there that's not generating a fee? And one of the big things is, the last subdivision, not so much Buzzell Road, but on the waterfront, we were getting complaints every week. There's an issue, there's an issue, there's an issue, we're going out there and we're really not finding them. But something like that subdivision, we probably hindsight should have looked at it and said, we're coming out once a week to look at the road. That was, that had enough of a slope, it was close enough to the water, that probably should have generated a weekly inspection, a weekly visit, and probably that particular developer wouldn't have cared to pay X amount because we're out there every week anyways on complaints. We could have just scheduled it every Friday at noon, we're going to come out, make sure everything's all up to snuff. So, that's the area we're really looking at that absorbs a lot of our time, but we're not generating fees out of it. But on the other hand, when he builds his eight houses, they're not going to be cheap, there's going to be tax dollars generated out of there as well, too.
Yeah, I, I would hate to charge any more fees, I think people pay enough fees, like, personally.
But a lot of it is, we don't have the time to go out and maintain this, and if we're keeping up with this level of inspections and enforcements, we're probably going to need another person, and now the taxpayers are paying for the developer for...
But when you get complaints, Ken, say like on this junkyard stuff, there's no revenue for anything going on there?
We had an individual over labor there, he cut 56 trees. It's $25 a tree, 1,700 bucks or whatever the number is. Now it's after the fact, now it's times four, 5,600. Well, they, he doesn't have enough money for the first permit, now but knowing the after the fact, and our goal is compliance. To replant those trees are probably going to be 10,000 to 12,000. So, there is no revenue being generated, compliance is the gold, but it's 275, $275 a day from the day the violation was notified. So, you could generate it, but again, we just want compliance at the end of the day. So, the same with the junkyards and things. The good people, and we just stopped and say, hey, clean your stuff up, it's cleaned up in a couple of days. Those are your 90 percenters. Your 10 percenters, they're going to fight, they, we've got several that we sent letters out to when we had the time for the junkyards, eight out of 10 cleaned up, those two, they just want to fight, they want to argue, they threw us off the property. So, that just takes a lot more time. Those are the people you'd talk with fines and penalties.
But what happened with some of that is the selectmen were designating days for you to deal with this. I mean, this is a whole day.
Oh, yeah.
And it wasn't just one day, it was weeks, one day.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And that's a lot of time that you're not bringing in anything, all you're doing out is running around and...
We could have if we wanted to look at it to generate revenue, but we don't, we just want compliance. And that's how we've always looked at it, but some towns, when you get the letter, the letter clearly says, you owe us $3,000 and clean your stuff up and, you know, there's a penalty in there. We, we just looked at it for compliance.
And I also think, not you, but I also think that Brenda being here for this should be under the, under the account of the planning board. I don't, I don't, I don't see why it would be under code enforcement.
Well, it's under land use and we merged them together to make it a little simpler, so at the end of the week, you didn't have to be saying, three hours here, two hours there, when I was there, because it would be the same as she was sitting at a desk and somebody came in with a conditional use or best practical location, she's still land used. She's still land use code enforcement, but she's helping somebody with a conditional use app. It'd be the same if she was doing minutes, trying to do minutes there and people keep coming in for permits and things like that. So she's multitasking at the same time. And it just seemed easier to just call it land use.
And I agree with that. I just don't think it should be all under land use. Because like I said, the code enforcement takes a bad rap for what it costs. And there's a lot to those costs that nobody understands unless it's broken out so that people can understand that.
Sure, or at least asking. And double-edged sword kinda, when the selectmen first hired me, they just said, here's your office and keep it all in there. Don't let it come down the hallway to us. And we did that, but we noticed, you know, six, eight, 10 years afterwards, they had no idea what we were doing. So when we asked for help and money, they had no idea what we were doing. So it's double-edged sword. But I do know when somebody calls and says, oh, we got more code officers than Wells has. Well, they're asking the wrong question, because Wells has much more than us. But if you're looking at, yeah, they've got three code offices, but then they've got two admin, they've got the land use secretary aspect of it, they've got their planner, they've got, you know, you put it all together. So like you're saying, it's broken out into separate budgets, because you have really separate departments. We were all just trying to merge as one. So it's just when you're trying to compare the apples and the oranges.
And it's like this best practical location you just did. I think I spent at least an hour with the couple doing the 20%, 30%. I verify their figures when they come in.
I appreciate that.
And they'll go up to look at the site.
Brenda, but that's when you're working for Kenny, so we say. And I think like here, not that you can't do whatever you do, but when it requires you to be here.
You mean here?
Right, right, right here.
Thursday, 7 o'clock.
Okay.
You know what I mean? That's different. I honestly believe it's different. And I'm not saying, you know, you should get any different money for anything. But that's accounting's problem, as far as I'm concerned. You know, it's not your problem, it's not Ken's problem, it's accounting problem. And if the selectmen aren't willing to change the way they're doing business, then I guess everything stays the same. But I just think it'd be a lot better for the community to have a clearer...
It would be good to put some more line items in here and make it clear that it's planning board expenses for advertising, and that's the 506 number.
Right.
50620, legal expenses. And I've never had legal expenses in here before. That's something they put in this year and...
Now we're over.
Oh, yeah.
That's a good thing.
Who puts together this budget? We have ours, bring it to the selectmen as our suggestion, and then they take it into Warren Finance for us. And usually, it's what we had before, where did we overexpend it, what are we seeing? So we haven't issued all of our growth permits for probably 10 or 12 years. And this year, we will be out of growth permits shortly. I think we'll have two left.
The Warren Finance Committee, at least I'm gonna speak from all, is what they're gonna be pushing this year is for line item budgeting. Okay? And the way that the municipal and the government's been doing it, they don't do line item budgeting.
Some towns do.
The school department does.
This town doesn't.
So you can look at, you can get onto the school and you can say, and this is true, how much money did you spend on pens and pencils last year? And then get out the paperwork and show it to you. You know what I mean? And I believe that that's the way all public entities should be. So that anybody can look at that stuff and see it. And it takes an awful lot of stress off the people that are doing the work. It really does. But that's my opinion, we have to do what the selectmen say.
So if you wanted to add more description in this part of the budget relative to the planning board, that's something that would be done in the office here? I just did it. That was my question. We'll do it and bring it up and see, just for... And I think these are standard accounting numbers, you know, 502 is always...
They were just assigned in another code.
Exactly.
Right, right, it's just another code, yeah.
Enforcement would be O1 and maybe planning would be O2.
Yeah. So that's the answer. After Dennis's comment, the line item budget would be sometime in the future. Yeah, yeah.
So as it stands now, by February 8th, they want to know what you're looking for?
For ordinances, yes. We have to give them the notice of potential ordinance articles for February 8th. With March 1st having the final articles to them. So all public hearings done by then. It's just finding enough time to really start looking at the ordinances. And it comes up every year fast.
It's only four meetings, I think.
I think at that point, then we have to push the review of the comp plan to the side a little bit till after February, you know, I mean, March 1st they want it. So I think we have to focus more on the ordinances. There's four meetings, right? Is that what it works out to be?
Well, it's no more than that. It's June 1 in December.
Yeah, well, we're gonna go over, we're gonna go over the holiday meetings and things like that. So I mean, it could be five meetings that we have.
The ordinances, as far as I can see, there's a lot in there I don't agree with. But with that being said, I think the ordinances that we need to look at are the ones that Kenny says that he thinks there's an issue with.
Well, that's what, you know, that's exactly. I mean, comp plan, we could do a subcommittee again and we could work and then pull him in when we need him. But for ordinances, he's gotta be in it from the beginning.
Yeah, he knows how many, what things that are kind of a problem.
Exactly, exactly. That's not something we can do on our own.
And so I don't think it'd be that big a deal as far as doing that. Because go with what Kenny's recommendation is or what you want, or what the issues are. I can have my opinion, but my opinion, right, don't read much, because I don't have to deal with it either. You know what I mean?
Definitely.
I had a lot of notes. First thing I got, we have to do is look at the timber harvesting one more time. We didn't strike enough out of it. The two gentlemen I was working with at the state level aren't there anymore. And there's... Land Management Roads is still in there. They wanna get rid of that. And there's a few other things. So it's not adding, it's again, just taking more stuff out. That's gonna be an easy one to do. Lot of definitions we should add. And just maybe uses, clarifying some of the uses, too. We just haven't had the time to prep. We always think we're constantly just amending the book every time we touch it. But we had a court case, I hope, finally wrapped up last Monday to get rid of that. But now we've got a zoning board one we're focusing on now, too, as well, too. So hopefully, between the two of that, we can find enough time just to take a look. There's nothing drastic in there that's fighting us. But there's a lot of things we could do to make it more user-friendly for different types of businesses, possibly, if the board's looking to bring things like that in. A lot of it, we've talked, was the 55 and older, some sort of a one-building environment, possibly. I think we can do plenty of cluster development, 55 and older, we've got a good enough ordinance for that. But as we're looking at some of these apartment buildings, just sounds horrific. But do you remember the terminology we were using for that? It was an efficiency.
No, it's not efficiency. And the thing is, when you're talking about apartment-type senior communities, that gets into such things that, you know, single-story buildings or building, so much easier, you know. You start talking about multi-stories, you're talking about elevators, you're talking about egress. You know, not one elevator, but maybe three elevators. And how many staircases are you gonna have? It just gets so, and where are you gonna put it?
You're gonna have to get a ladder truck.
Yeah, we gotta get a ladder truck.
We'll have to get the ladder truck.
Right. But no, but then where are you gonna put it with the way our, you got five acres, where are you gonna put this building that maybe has 12 apartments in it?
Yeah, so currently, I think the ordinance maxes out at six units per building and that's not cost-effective for a developer.
Right.
And what I see a lot of people do is they've been in town forever, they've got, you know, 20 acres, the old farmhouse, they don't wanna maintain and take care of it anymore. And they end up going to a building in Sanford or something like that. They end up leaving the community, which it just seems if we had a place for them, that would be better. So the first thing would be allowing it through zoning, which may attract somebody that has the means to work with federal money and private money and be able to build something, because you're talking multiple million dollars.
Yeah.
And at the end of the day, if there's no money in it, then nobody's gonna build it anyways.
One of the things, I know, some of us have read this comp plan twice, maybe two and a half times. Somebody else I know has read it at least four times, but I won't mention Dennis's name.
He's just picking up my slack.
Oh, okay.
I thought we did yesterday.
And I think Tom knows it by heart, and I won't bring any more names into it. But when this was written, which was, you know, 2005, June, the average age here was 34.7 years. And if you look at it today, it's 47.8 is the average age, people here. When you're 48 years old, you've gotten your first complimentary membership did for AARP. You know, we're watching you, you're coming down the road, you know, join AARP. And that's when you really start thinking, how am I gonna take care of this 10 acres and this farmhouse and this, that and the other thing? So they're gonna move out. And they're gonna do, move out before they need. So, you know, 55 plus become very attractive to people. They're still working, they can still afford it. But they can't when they're 65 or 70 years old. But they gotta go out anyway. So I think it would be of value to the town to have some places for more senior people.
And that was just one area of the ordinance, and it may be too in-depth. We always think, you know, we have a June Town meeting, all of a sudden, July, August has passed, it's September, it's like, oh, we better start with that. And next thing you know, we have four meetings left to get to it. And we could do public hearings after that, but we're getting pretty close.
I mean, we definitely, I would think, would wanna put something in to cover animals, I guess. Bonds, raising animals in the water and away from the water, near the resource protection and, you know...
We should have a meeting on that, take a look at the maps, and then get a good understanding where we're talking about, too.
Because it affected a lot of people.
Oh, yeah.
All the Goose Pond Road.
Yep.
Which that area you wouldn't think of, but it's all resource protection out there.
It's hard for what was developed as a farming community, which has turned into a...
Bedroom.
Right, bedroom community. It's hard to make that transition.
But on the other hand, let's just say, we were looking at drafting an ordinance, no hoof and foul in the RP and shoreline zoning. So the current people, and we'd have to think about that, would be allowed to keep theirs? And if theirs died, could you replace them? Are you gonna say you have five, so you can only have five? Or if you die, you can't replace them? So at that point, would you have everybody register what they had so you could know who's grandfathered and who's not? That's not gonna go over good. And can we have the animal control office be in charge of it? Not us?
Not us.
The one we don't have. So we confuse ACO with CEO.
I don't know what the answer is, Ken.
No, that's tough.
You know, I know myself personally, you know, they got me on the federal...
Watch list?
He's on the no-fly list.
You know what I mean, the farm thing. I don't remember how many years, what was, they come around, did a survey.
Well, we registered you.
And they did, they registered me. And every once in a while, I don't remember how often, five years or something, they send me a thing. I don't know what the answer is, but I do know that...
Animals don't belong in the shoreline?
I don't know. I fenced down to the water and that way they didn't have to lug them water that you down there and drink. That's what they used to do.
Yeah.
And we managed to overpopulate.
You know what I mean?
Right, yeah, yeah.
So I mean, I don't know what the answer is, but I think that in the future, this could be an awful can of worms, no matter which way, if you don't do anything.
I mean, if we...
It's gonna be endless.
If we just took your streets and your other one talking, Flack Round Road goes through here, it's all resource protection and shoreline zone with a little bit of flood zone, so...
I could even have my kids.
Yeah, as long as your kids come back. And then all across Hopper Road down in that area, too, would all be issues. So I think you'd have to specifically, if you were to change these ordinances, find out who it affects and send everybody a notice that we're talking about you that could change it. When we did the last expansion for shoreline and resource protection, we just notified everybody in town. So everybody called and we looked and we said, no, it doesn't affect you. You know, because you're not in it, but...
Could you just look at the shoreline district?
And not the resource protection?
Yeah, just state matches the shoreline district.
Oh, that just took Dennis out.
Son of a gun.
So, which makes it even harder, because there's 80,000 people drinking the water downstream from your house. I don't know how many people drink it out of Mouson, and that goes down into Sanford, too, as well, I think.
Yeah, but they have the water treatment down there.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it's all crucial, critical water shifts.
Obviously, we're not gonna settle any of this tonight, but what we could do with agreement from the board is right now, we meet the first and third Thursdays of the month. That gives us other open Thursdays, you know. We could, like, starting with, well, December, the 6th and the 20th are what's scheduled right now. Well, you could meet on, you know, you could meet on the 29th, which I don't think anybody wants to, but forget those. Start in January, that gets you to the 27th, the 10th, the 21st and the 31st, where we could meet, not at a, you know, at a separate planning board meeting just to work on things like this. If anybody felt it was something we should do that needed our attention. And we could probably get a lot done.
Well, like I said, I can, I take Kenny's lead on this. I think, you know, what do you think, what we need to do?
Okay, what do you think we need to do?
I had in my things to do was to exempt small buildings for animals from needing permits. I think it was, you know, 80 square feet, up to three or four of them. Just because the simple ones that are like down on Hopper Road, they have a bunny shack and a chicken coop and things like that. Just as long as they met setbacks, we don't care about them. I mean, we just don't have the time to chase those things.
There was a time these buildings were exempted, and then in winter, they weren't. And then it went back to...
Yeah, things under 100 square feet or 80 square feet or something like that, not in the shoreline zone. I don't wanna say we don't care about, but we just don't have the time.
As long as they meet setbacks, requirements.
Little farm animal things or something like that, so...
Would that fall under a hobby farm?
We would have to have a... We would have to have a definition of a hobby, hobby farm, bring that in.
Leslie, you have a definition of a hobby farm?
I can, I can get one.
I hope you're awesome, so you don't want to get off on that. You gonna hurt, no, I'm not, that's horrible, I'm sorry.
No, I just, I read an interesting thing today, uh, in the olden days when...
All right, um, is small farm operated for pleasure or supplemental income rather than for primary income?
And that's, the state is saying that, yes?
That's just a dictionary definition.
That's just a Google definition.
Yes.
It's kinda broad.
Yes, very broad, very broad.
So I would think what we'd do is ask Kenny in his spare time, if he'd just break down a list of the ones that, you know, he'd like us to look at.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
That's perfect, that might be done already, but what I, what I, what I did...
Don't make them into people.
What I, what I did hear about horses today was that, you know, eighty years ago, everybody owned horses, and only the very rich owned cars. Today, everybody owns cars, and only the very rich might own a horse.
That's true.
Yeah.
You have to be.
Usually a horse person is very well or not.
Yeah.
Dirt poor, filthy rich.
Right, nothing in the middle, you decide you feed your kids or you feed the horse.
Yeah.
I'd pay my kids a horse.
Better than your way around.
Yeah. Uh, some of the definitions I was looking at trying to add in today was accessory agricultural use, ADU, I think we grabbed that last year.
We grabbed that one.
Adult daycare, agritourms, tourism's a big one out there, we've seen, assisted living facility, bed and breakfast, uh, contractor yard, we have a lot of contractors that work out of their home, if it's a home occupation, you're supposed to drive by and not realize there's a business there, except for the little sign out front, so once you have five, six, ten pieces of equipment, big pile of dirt, you're, you're not a home occupation, but, you know, it's just working out of your house, that was an area where it would take a lot of it, uh, cluster housing, in that cluster, I think we should be looking at maybe a buffer around the, the development itself maybe, and take a look at how much buffering we should have out there, farmer's market, the roadside stands, I don't know if we have anything for the petroleum bulk plants out there, we do have some in town, but, uh, looking at the wetlands and identifying, um, are they prime or category, and they've all got the same buffers, it just depends on how big they are.
I think the wetlands really needs some serious look on the maps themselves, I, I, I think they really need to be looked at, and there really need to be some changes made.
Um, everyone that we've, so we've used National Wetland Inventory for the mapping, how we got those there. So National Wetland Inventory mapped these for us, and then that created, um, the area to create the buffers around the Southern Maine Regional. Every time somebody's, and it's probably the definition you're really thinking of, um, disagreed with our wetlands, when they went out and had a professional wetland, um, survey done on their property, they'd rather use our mapping, so our mapping is better than...
I guess, around, like, on Plum Park, can there's some places that are missing on the map?
Adding more?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we've only mapped or protected anything two acres and greater of forested wetland.
Yeah, and there's other ones out there that's not on the map.
Greater than two acres?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Some of them dried up, because of the logging.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
Yeah.
They just stripped it, and, and they dried up, but there's one place that, there was a pond there, was swell grass for a hundred and fifty years, and now it's dry.
That would make it a hundred and seventy-five.
It would.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, senior housing, we talked about that.
That would be different, too.
Looking at stormwater, uh, varnish pools has usually gone through with the DEP, uh, veterinary hospital clinics, really expanding some of the definitions we've had to clarify what we've got out there.
As we have that, too.
Yeah. Quite a list there. That was just off the cuff back in March or April when I was just looking, and most of it is just reading other towns' ordinances, what do they do, what do they have, how do they work that? What are we doing different, how can we do it better, more efficient?
We always do things that will win our town.
Yeah.
If we don't now, we'll tomorrow.
Yeah, tomorrow never gets here, that's the problem.
Well, I think that's a great thing.
Yeah, so Ken, if, if you put a, a list together, um, you and I can talk.
Yeah.
And then we will get together at our next meeting and decide if we wanna pick a few Thursdays if it works for Ken, a few Thursday nights.
I usually take most of my vacation in the winter, 'cause I can't get it in the summer, but we'll see how that works.
Well, we'll see when you're around.
Yeah.
And, you know, apply you with a pizza or something to get you to stay in one night and, uh, you know, knock a few things off.
Yeah.
Um, then we can, we'll set something up, within the next, by December first, we'll have something set up. Does everybody think that's agreeable? And would you be agreeable to an odd Thursday now and then?
Sure.
Yeah, and those who can, even a daytime, when Ken might have, say, okay?
Yeah.
Here's a few hours, uh, on this day or that day.
December's very difficult for me, but I'm sure...
Well, no, no, we'll have a plan by December, okay?
We'll start in January.
And we'll start in January, but we'll have a plan that we can get back to all of you and say, this is it, and even some daytime, I know daytime would be impossible for, you know, you might be able to do it.
And the time is four o'clock.
Sorry?
Four o'clock, it's like daytime.
Wow.
Four P.M.?
It's dark out, I don't...
We will have a twenty-two lot subdivision coming in in December, and another wedding barn with multiple cabins, uh, it's an event center, I think we'll call it that one.
Yeah, yeah.
Is that one, okay?
Hopper Road.
Up on the hill?
Nope.
Where's the twenty-two subdivision?
Right in your neighborhood.
Right, where do you think?
It's not, it's not Nathan's Peak.
Nope.
It was Nathan's Peak.
Nope, um, Chuck had the gravel pit.
Really, Chuck had one?
Yeah, that's mine, not him, but the new owners. Their words were they wanted to put acting on the map, I told them I didn't think we wanted to be on the map, but somebody else may have a different opinion.
Different opinion, they're not gonna be happy if they can't get a drink on Sunday, though.
No weddings on Sundays?
No weddings on Sunday.
No drinking?
No, no sale.
No sale.
No sale.
Midnight, shut off the taps at midnight?
Well, so far, that's it, you know, so far.
That's what they said.
Yeah, yeah, but that'll change.
I'd go for that.
Yeah, that's gonna change again.
So they wouldn't sell the alcohol, that would probably be the package.
Eat and consume it in, in a, like, a restaurant either.
No.
Yeah, yeah.
Unless the restaurant gives it away.
You know, the big fight we had in town when the Trading Post wanted to start selling, uh, hot liquor?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
It was huge. Then the partying shit wanted to, we had to sell wine, and they started doing sucklers, and that was another big...
Yeah, well...
Now look at it.
Okay, let's, let's get this, um, wrapped up, we can do that, um, we will, Ken and I will talk, we'll put some things together, we'll get back to you. What we have to do now is get your calendars out, please, I'll look at that one, um, meetings, okay? The first Thursday in December is the sixth, that's not a problem for anybody, I take it.
That is.
Hmm?
I, that, that is for me.
Well, I, I, it's not, you're working that night?
Yes.
Yeah, I, well, I imagine you're, you're gonna be doing a lot of holiday stuff. Okay, now the next December meeting would be scheduled for the twentieth, does anybody want to come to a meeting on December twentieth?
Nope.
Doesn't bother me.
I would if I were here, I don't know.
I mean, I, I'm, same thing, I...
I think once we get through the holidays, Joyce.
No, well, this is, we gotta set these, no, 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 this is, we gotta set these holidays.
Depends how much, how much we have to get done, I guess, I mean, there's people waiting, they want, should look at applications.
You know, because it...
Might as well, yeah.
If we get towards the...
If there's nothing there, then...
Yeah, I was just gonna say that, if we get into the twentieth and I have no applications pending, we'll let you know, and then...
Okay, then, then that'll be, so we'll, we'll just say December twentieth with a question mark.
The sixth, we're good for the sixth.
We're good for the sixth.
A meeting with the applicant, his attorney and engineers on that day, so I won't have the, the application ready for you guys at that point, but...
Okay, so the next, in January, the meeting would be January third, is that too close to New Year's Day for folks, or is that, okay?
Depends on what you drink.
You'd be the last person I would worry about that. Stay away from the eggnog. Okay, so, um, then it...
These are day meetings you're done, though?
No, no, these are, these are regular meetings, these are regular meetings.
Oh, all right.
Regular meetings, um, our first regular planning board meeting in the new year is the third.
Oh, boy.
Okay, there'd be the third and the seventeenth are the regular planning board meetings in January, so then, uh, you know, we'll have the other side of it looked out, and we'll all let you know, maybe we meet on the tenth, that's the, the odd Wednesday, and we go from there, uh, and we can, we can leave it as not a subcommittee, but the whole committee, and if you can make it, you make it, if you can't, you can't, and, but you come to as many as you can on the off...
Odd.
On the odd meeting days, okay?
And then it'll start in January?
That'll start in January.
I'll send you notes for my thinking.
Right, right.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay, so that is, um, what we're gonna do, we're gonna, we're gonna back off probably for about two and a half months on the comp plan, unless something comes up that we can knock off just like crazy. The only other thing, and I just touched on it very, very briefly, was Brenda reviewed the permit spreadsheet that the code office posts on the website, uh, she explained that people can refer to it on the website to see all the permits issued by this office. Now, that's not just what we do, it's what they do, and, you know, everything, and that spreadsheet is updated on Fridays, and she's gotten fabulous feedback.
Yeah.
I, other towns wanting to know, where did you get that? She did it, but that was part of what went to the Board of Selectmen in our report, and I just can't, we owe you a big thank you, so thank you very much for that, um, because as well as the sheet that you got, uh, you have other sheets, she had put with it copies of our new bylaws, copies of our old bylaws, uh, a copy of one of these pages, uh, just highlighting, it might have even been this page, in the comp plan, things that are our responsibility to review, so, you know, we're not, we're saying, no, we're not rewriting the comp plan, there are things in here that are, need to be reviewed by us, it's clearly stated in here.
The other thing we talked about at the last meeting, Joyce, was, um, the growth permits, and we talked quite a bit, um, about, um, them being on the, the Episcopal year instead of the calendar year, and you related to me, Kent's rationale, believing the way it is, but, uh, we didn't address it tonight, so if you could just explain to the public why, or can he put, why we wanna leave it on the calendar year?
Yeah, and, and it makes it tougher for us to record it that way, to break it out, so it doesn't, it looks odd, 'cause we're, the growth permits are January to December, and everything else is July to June, um, so if somebody wanted to build a house, and so this year we're gonna be out of growth permits, they would have to wait till next July to get a growth permit versus when we issued it in January, they're gonna, they're gonna start in January and February, but they can go get their financing and stuff and be building in March, April, May, they could be almost living in their house by July, so, I know some towns issue growth permits through the planning board, and they'll issue two a month to equal twenty-four, or three a month to equal thirty-six, whatever they're doing, which, when I first said that, I'm like, so I wanna build in March, and I'm on the calendar for December's planning board meeting, if you're trying to control it by a year, that made no sense whatsoever. So I'd be getting my growth permit at the next planning board meeting in December, but I can't build till the following year, so, and, and especially the last ten years where we haven't been using them all to be waiting so long to get them, didn't make sense either, so, um, it was much more complicated when we had forty people camped out here for days to get them, uh, at least we don't have that, 'cause if everyone gets their growth permit on day one, there's no issues, but if you've got one or two people that didn't get them, then it's, he was in line, he cut, when did they get here, they have all their stuff ready, it made it very, very stressful for everybody, so...
Well, I agree with your explanation, can I just, up on the TV, land there, there at the conversation?
Right.
You know, I just wanted it to be out there so that everybody would know the, you know, the rationale, so...
That's why we were doing it. Okay, so that actually covers everything that we have, does anybody else have anything they would like to bring up?
Just that you did a good job at your Slumans meeting the other night.
Thanks.
Very good job.
Thanks. Anybody? Then I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Take a motion to adjourn.
Second, discussion, favor, all in favor? Thank you all very much, have a wonderful Thanksgiving, everybody.
See, I was gonna get on past...